Jim, you're live.
Thank you, Heather. Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Henrietta Planning Board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. Members present: Matt Borkowski, Patricia Brill, Craig Eckert, Stephen McIntyre, Lawrence Neal, Rick Page, town staff present are Chris Martin, Town Engineer, and Dan Mestrela, Planning Board Attorney. First item on the agenda will be the minutes from the May 28th, 2020 meeting. Does the Chair have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Sufficient second?
Second.
You're on mute, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. The motion carries. And I want to take this opportunity to welcome the public that's viewing on either Facebook or YouTube and let you know that the, there'll be a public hearing with the Henrietta Town Board being held in regards to open space on the Forest View Subdivision project on July 6th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. Information will be mailed out to the residents in the next few days as to how to participate in that public hearing. Second item on the agenda tonight is application number PB 324, Forest View Subdivision, for preliminary subdivision approval of a 47-lot residential subdivision with 90.6 acres of open space and a conservation easement area located off of Ward Hill Road in a rural residential zoned district. May I ask who's here representing the applicant this evening?
I'm you.
Applicants?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Ryan Destro with BME Associates, and I'm also here with Peter Vars as well.
Thank you.
And Ron Hankel also is the applicant.
Thank you. Patty, do you need spellings at all?
If you could spell the, your name with Peter Vars, apologize. Thank you.
Ryan, R-Y-A-N. The last name is Destro, D-E-S-T-R-O.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I will let the applicant go ahead and make their presentation this evening, and then we'll move to the board.
Okay, so following the last Planning Board meeting where the public hearing was closed, a couple main concerns were received from both the residents as well as the board, one being drainage, and we will review the drainage in the second here, and then the second being traffic. We understand that the town has contracted SRF Associates Traffic Consultant to conduct traffic study on the town's behalf for further clarification for some of the concerns that were addressed. Since the last meeting, we have received preliminary town comments from the town staff. We have revised our plans and the engineer's report and have resubmitted them. We've also addressed the town engineer and drainage consultant for the town, their comments for drainage. We've also provided enhanced drainage exhibits that provided further clarification from the two drainage exhibits that were provided in the engineer's report. They're color-coded and they show the pre-development drainage conditions as well as the post-development drainage conditions, showing that there's a reduction in drainage area to the Ward Hill Road, to the northeastern, northeastern corner of the project, and then the remainder of the drainage is being conveyed to the onsite stormwater management facility where it will be detained and the peak flow rates will be reduced from under pre-existing conditions. And then, as I said, SRF has also prepared a traffic study, and I believe there is a representative from SRF on the meeting tonight as well.
Hi, my name is Amy Dake. I'm with SRF Associates. We were contracted by the town to perform a traffic study for this. We looked at three intersections, the intersections of East Henrietta and Ward Hill Road, Pinnacle and Ward Hill Road, as well as Ward Hill Road with Branch Brook Drive, which is directly opposite the proposed new roadway for the development. It's a little difficult because of everything that's going on with COVID. Traffic's not really normal right now, so we couldn't collect traffic data. So we were able to obtain some historical data in terms of turing movement counts at the, at the intersections, as well as some recent New York State DOT and Monroe County DOT traffic counts. And through that, we were able to develop traffic counts representative of traffic today at those intersections. So we conducted our analysis. If you have the report on page two, we do have a chart that shows the evolution of traffic on the three roadways, and those lines basically show that traffic was pretty steady between 1995 and 2017 on both Ward Hill Road and Pinnacle Road. You'll see an increase in traffic on East Henrietta Road between 2002 and 2005, and this was a result of construction on nearby roadways that diverted traffic to that roadway for that time period. And then you'll see that the traffic volumes came back down to where they were previously. The trip generation for the site, there's 46 single-family homes, and we anticipate that that would generate nine entering trips and 28 exiting trips during the morning peak hour commuter time period. And in the evening peak hour, we anticipate a trip generation of 30 entering trips and 18 exiting trips. And when we look at the capacity analysis for the intersections, we find that all of the intersections operate at an above-average level of service B or better. That's a quick synopsis of the traffic study. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Amy. Does anybody have a question for, for Amy?
Well, I guess I will. The, what I understand because of the COVID-19, you had, or were limited is what you could do. So the information basically came from 1995. Is that correct?
Yeah, we took the 1995 full development traffic volumes for the Harvest Hill subdivision and then projected those out to today's volumes.
Okay. You, you did what you were asked to do. I understand that, which is basically checking the intersections to see if anything needs to be done to mitigate them. And you did your job. I understand that. But looking back at the comments from the residents, I, I think maybe we gave you the wrong request. And that is, the concern coming from the neighborhood, as I was reading, was not really the volume of traffic, but more like the speed of the traffic and the hill and how that pertained to the residents' concern for somebody getting hit by a car. So you did what you were asked to do. I understand that. But from the residents' perspective, I kind of think we missed what they really were looking for, and that's all I have to say about that. If anybody else wants to weigh into that. But if you look at the comments, which were summarized on one of the emails, there's an awful lot of concern about the speed, how they're approaching the hill, et cetera. And that's what I had to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Any other questions for, for Amy? Thank you. Applicant, were you complete? Had you completed your presentation, or is there anything more you'd like to get to before I go to the board?
No, we do have some additional information. Real quickly on the traffic, we did prepare Monroe County DOT plans for both entrances. We had received comments. We had addressed their comments in February, and at that time, the Monroe County DOT had acknowledged verbally that they were ready to sign off on both entrances. We also provided documentation of their verbal approval to the town engineer. That should be on file. And if we have any other, oh, I'd like to get back to drainage as well, too, when you're ready.
Certainly.
Okay, so as a follow-up, too, we did supply, as I mentioned, those two drainage exhibits, enhanced drainage exhibits. We did present them to the town board last week, and Amy Dake also reviewed the traffic with the town board as well. Do you have the ability to pull up those two drainage exhibits?
I don't think so. Heather, is there a way to do that, or Chris?
Let me see if I can pull it up in my email real quick. One sec.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think in the, in the past, we've had the applicant share their screen and show us what you wanted to show us, but just for, just for reference.
Which we can do.
If you're comfortable with that, that might be the easiest way to convey what you're trying to show us.
All right. One second here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Neal.
Okay. I have a thought which, you know, about the speed on Ward Hill, and it has to do with what is actually the traffic on Erie Station. The Erie Station that I'm thinking of goes from East Henrietta to basically West Henrietta. And at some point, the speed limit was, I think, lowered down to 35. And if you've ever traveled on Erie Station, you need to watch out for Monroe County Sheriff's Department because they give a lot of tickets, at least they have in the past. I know my daughter got one, that they lowered the speed limit down to 35 for an area which typically I think would be 50 miles an hour. And if it was possible to lower the speed on Ward Hill to, I, I think it currently is 45. I'm not positive about that. But if perhaps the speed could be lowered, and then we're asking Monroe County to actually observe that road, I think that that might satisfy some of the concerns of the neighbors. However, I also think that if they did it, and there was more visual, visual sheriff participation on that road, it could be the residents are going to get the tickets. So that was just my thought on how we could address what I think it really is, the, the neighbor's concern.
Yeah, I agree with you. There was a lot of concern with that, but I don't believe that's in our purview to do that. Yeah, I think we can look at the study and the traffic and determine the influence that this project may have on the traffic, but there are other avenues that have to be taken in order to modify a speed limit and those other things. And I don't know whether that's a state road or a county, it's a county road?
Chris?
Yeah, let me speak, yeah, let me speak to that, Larry. So this is Chris Martin. I just pulled the engineer's report, and the engineer's report, when it discusses traffic, is the posted speed limit is 40 miles per hour. So it's posted at 40. Do people go faster than that? Probably. So having said that, it is a Monroe County road, and you know, certainly we can have conversations with Monroe County to see maybe if they can reduce that to 30 or 35 miles per hour. Also, we do have, the town does have posted speed signs that they can mount that, you know, can tell how fast traffic is going. You know, we could do that for a short period of time, and that tends to slow people down. However, once those signs go away, you know, typically people speed back up again. Or, you know, you could have the county sheriff, you know, certainly monitor the traffic. However, once they're gone, then people go back to their old habits. But I'd be more than happy to contact the county to see if maybe they're interested in reducing the, the speed limit on Ward Hill Road.
I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman?
You remuted, Craig.
Yes.
I have both maps here. I have one that's proposed and one existing. Which one would the applicant like me to show?
Gentlemen, did you have a specific one you wanted up there right now? Peter?
Ryan and Peter, are you able to hear us? Peter, you're back on mute. There we go.
Sorry, we're back on.
Heather has the maps. Gentlemen, which one did you want up there first, please?
The existing, pre-existing.
Existing one? Okay.
Yes, the existing one. And if not, I can bring it up.
Can you see it?
Yes. It's upside down.
Yeah.
That's all right.
So, so that's okay. So the red area is representative of the area of the site that drains to the northeast. There's an existing swell along the south side of Ward Hill Road, and that area, under the current existing conditions, drains to the northeast to that swell on the south side of Ward Hill Road, where it had, where it continues east about eight or nine lots, and then there's a culvert underneath the road where it heads to the north and then continues on to the east after that. The blue area is representative of the existing condition area that drains to the southwestern portion of the site. The yellow lines represent, and the green arrows represent the current drainage flow paths. So the existing area in blue is 42 and a half acres approximately, and under the existing conditions, the red area, which currently drains northeast to Ward Hill Road, is approximately seven and a half acres. Now, the area represented in blue is drainage area A. As the site drains to the southwest portion of the site, it enters a low point on the property, and then ultimately it is conveyed to a swell, an existing swell that conveys the runoff to the west under Wood, Woodridge Trail via culvert, and then it continues west beyond that. If you want to switch to the proposed conditions map now, please.
Yes, one second.
Okay.
All right, there you go.
Now, as you'll notice when this comes up on the screen, the area in red that drains to Ward Hill Road, as I said, to the northeast of the property, that area has been reduced from approximately seven and a half acres to two and a half acres now. So a five-acre reduction of drainage is going to result from the proposed conditions and the proposed development. As you can see, the majority of the site will continue to drain to the southwest. The additional five acres will be conveyed that way. But as this plan shows under the full development, it shows the 46 residential units, and the impervious area, including the rooftops, driveways, and the dedicated road, will all be conveyed to the southwestern portion of the site where the stormwater management facility is. There, it will be detained and then released at controlled peak flow rates, which are less than the existing conditions. And so for a 10-year storm, for example, under existing conditions for drainage area A, which is the blue area, it's 18.4 CFS or cubic feet per second is the peak flow off of the site in the lower left corner of that, of that exhibit. Under proposed conditions, while there's an increase in area of five acres, that's what the pond does. The pond has been designed to detain that additional runoff from the impervious areas and release it at a controlled rate. So under the proposed conditions, the 10-year peak storm flow rate will be 10 CFS. So a reduction from 18 under existing to 10 CFS, which represents a 44.3% reduction. And then for drainage area B, which represents the red area on the diagrams, under the 10-year design storm, the peak flow from the site under the existing conditions is approximately 2.3 CFS when it has seven and a half acres of drainage, contributing drainage area. Under proposed conditions, the 10-year storm peak flow will be reduced from 2.3 to 1 CFS, which represents a 55.5% reduction. With that being said, does anybody have any questions on these drainage exhibits?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question if I could.
Yes, Mr. Neal.
Oh, sure. Ryan, are the yellow lines, is, is that a swell that is catching the runoff? Or?
So in the developed portion of the site, the yellow lines actually represent the storm sewer system. So those are, that's the storm sewer that's along the road, and then also the three lines that go to the north towards Ward, Ward Hill Road, they represent the rear yard storm inlets that will catch the runoff from the hill from Ward Hill above. And then, in the lower portion of the blue area, that represents a channelized swell or the most common flow path through that drainage area.
Okay, and it picks up the water coming out of the pond immediately, coming out of a pipe or something or other, and then carries it to the south. Am I correct?
Yep, correct.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Neal.
Ryan? I'm sorry, go ahead, Patty.
That's okay. I would just like to ask a question to kind of jump on board with what Larry said. You know, my one concern is, and I do see the new drainage layout indicating, indicated by the yellow line or the storm sewers, but I just want to confirm, and it looks to me on this paper, that the drainage has absolutely been mitigated from the existing drainage issues they're having to the northeast portion of this property to bring that drainage down to the southwest corner. And I just want to reiterate that for the confidence of the homeowners, so we can have a discussion on the drainage that is currently going to those issues.
Patty, this is Peter Vars, and, and I can tell you, that's been one of the design principles from the outset of this project, and that goes back to meeting with town staff back even last fall about this project, and that was to provide a certain level of relief to the drainage pattern that currently drains northeast to Ward Hill Road. What you can see on the exhibit that's very clear and, but also very important, as Ryan pointed out, there is a significant reduction in the drainage area itself that will be draining to the northeast because we're redirecting it to the southwest. But also, the drainage that will go to the northeast is just going to be the rear yard areas of the development. All of the impervious surfaces, the roadways, the driveways, the houses, all will connect and drain to the proposed street. And that's why we highlighted the yellow line through the street, because that's the proposed storm sewer network that will collect the runoff from the development site, from the site to be developed, and convey that to the stormwater management pond that will be constructed with the development, so that the runoff that is discharged or goes to the northeast will just be rear yard area. And it, and the fact of the matter is, is the size of the drainage area that's contributing runoff to the existing Ward Hill Road roadside drainage swell is being reduced from this property as a result of, of the proposed stormwater management plan that would be implemented with this project.
Thank you for reiterating that, Peter. I appreciate it. Another thing I kind of questioned to myself, you know, I saw that very clearly on here, but I wanted to make sure we were verbally addressing that. But as we're rerouting the water down to the southwest corner to that proposed pond, which I saw had a very high wall and would hold, I wrote it down, but I'm not finding it right now, many, many thousands of gallons of water, I just want to make sure that we are not readdressing any water issues and adding to issues that might be in the southwest corner.
So the pond has been designed for, for the New York State DEC Stormwater Management Design Guidelines. The, the actual embankment of the pond does not meet any dam criteria. So we're below any dam criteria of the New York State DEC. The pond is sized to control and detain the one-year through the 100-year storm rain events, and detain each storm at a controlled rate with the peak flow being less than under the existing conditions at that point where the swell exits the site to the west.
Thank you for reiterating that. I appreciate it, Ryan.
Mrs. Brill, anything else with drainage?
No, I just wanted to bring both of those situations to topic. So thank you for confirming and reconfirming.
Yep. Ryan and Peter, anything further?
No, we're, we're just here at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Neal.
Chris, I had a question for you. Does this look like it's going to satisfy the neighbors that we're going to collect this water correctly?
I mean, from an engineering standpoint, Larry, it should. So the answer is yes. It'll reduce the runoff significantly, not only going to the northeast, but also to the southwest as well. Also, we have our consultant, Vanguard Engineering. They also review the drainage as well. So we always get a second, you know, a person reviewing it, reviewing the drainage study, rather. And also, I'd like to add, too, is that once the pond is constructed, we also do, we have the applicant do a survey of the pond to make sure that it's designed or it's constructed in accordance with the design drawings. So we always have a lot of checks and balances, you know, during construction and then after construction as well.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate that.
Listen, if I could add, ask one more question to kind of go along with that. Just want to address the elephant in the room. It, it looks to me like the drainage has absolutely been addressed and will take care of any existing issues, but I think I have read more times than just a few questions from the existing residents, what if this doesn't work? How will that be addressed on the road?
Yeah, so this, let's say, for example, Patty, that, you know, there are issues, whether they're backyard issues or front yard, or maybe the pond's not working. You know, we can have the applicant's engineer, you know, make adjustments, and you make sure that there are no impacts downstream. You know, particularly with the backyard, drainage is probably one of the biggest concerns that we see from subdivisions. And, you know, through the years, you know, we do a thorough review of designs, or we have been, to make sure that those rear yard inlets work and that they're constructed properly and that the drainage goes towards them. And if it isn't, we ask the developer to fix that. You know, at the end of these projects, when we take dedication, we ask for a two-year maintenance bond. And, you know, if there's anything that happens within those two years, then it's up to the developer to fix it. Think of it like a warranty on your car.
Thank you for confirming. Yes, and thank you for confirming that. I really appreciate it, and I think the residents will appreciate that as well.
I'll send Mrs. Brill.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the Chair will recognize. Mr. McIntyre?
Chris, Steve McIntyre, you had several drainage and grading questions on your June 10th notes here, one of them being that swell located on the side of the subdivision between lots 40 and 41. Were those addressed by the developer? of the subdivision between lots 40 and 41. Were those addressed by the developer?
I think there's still some, I still have some concerns with that, Steve. Even though it's a little bit further down, we want to try to take as much water southwest as we can. And looking at the spot elevation and some of the contours, it didn't look quite right. So I'm just wanting the applicant to take a second look at it to see if that swell or drainage swell can be a little better defined, to take that water south like we'd like it to.
Have you had the conversation with the developers? I mean, we've got them right here now. Should we ask them if they've?
Well, I did give them my comments, and I know they will be addressed adequately before we'll sign off on the drawings. But if Peter or Ryan have anything they would like to talk about, then absolutely, they have the floor.
I guess, Chris, oh, go ahead.
Peter, Ryan, do you have any embellishment on this comment, particularly number four on drainage and grading?
Yes, we did look at that swell, and we can provide additional spot elevations to further clarify that. But I'd just like to add, as Pete mentioned before too, that area going to that swell is only going to be, under proposed conditions, just lawn areas. So no impervious areas is designed to enter that swell. So it should just be lawn areas draining to it. And we'll add, we'll look to add further spot elevations on the grading plan just to clarify the direction, the ultimate direction of that swell to meet Chris's comments.
So the drainage and grading, you don't see any showstoppers there? Ryan?
No, sorry.
Okay, drainage pretty well.
Would you like to move in any other concerns you might have?
Um, you know, we doing a roundtable now?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Peter and Ryan, I'm going back to these comments again with this detached unit option. Could you kind of go into that a little bit more?
Actually, if Ron Hinkle wants to address that, I mean, and I think Ron would be best to address that.
Who would be? Ryan?
Yeah.
Ron, you are on mute.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we have decided, we've listened to the, we've listened to some of the people from the previous board meeting, and I've listened to people that I've been talking to about this development, and we have decided to go to single-family patio homes with us, detached homes. So.
Single-family only?
I'm sorry?
It would be a single-family only home.
Correct. There shows a detail in here of how the lots would change to single-family on page two of.
There was also a comment down there about the sidewalk on Ward Hill Road. Are you committed to that, particularly in lieu of Mr. Neal's comments about traffic safety, keeping the pedestrians and the traffic away from each other?
I am not seeing that one.
It's a. Ron, I can speak to that a little bit. Yeah, as I do, yeah, we've not seen the comments. I think you said they were June 10th, Mr. McIntyre. We haven't seen those yet. But I did have a conversation with Chris today, and Ron and I, we were part of a conversation, I want to say a week or so ago, with the supervisor, deputy supervisor and that. And there was the discussion, remember, Ron raised about the, about putting sidewalk in along the property's frontage on Ward Hill Road as part of this project. So.
Yes, on Ward Hill, yes.
Yeah, that that request is there. But we just haven't seen the actual wording of it.
That was requested from the town board?
It was a suggestion made that that may be something. And I think the key, Mr. McIntyre, as you brought up, and that was kind of the conversation we had with Chris Martin today too, is it's a good thing as it relates to the concern, because it can help address some of the concerns that have been raised through the public hearing to date.
Okay, I'm not sure if I'm getting a, are you saying you are in favor of it or not in favor of it?
I'm going to speak here for the developer, that he's definitely willing to consider it. But we haven't seen the comment yet to see what the parameters of the request are. But in the discussions we had, I want to say a week and a half, two weeks ago, we were amenable to it. But we needed to know what, as you heard Mr. Hinkle say, yes, sidewalks are on the frontage, yes. So, but we haven't seen the actual comment yet or the actual request.
Yeah, the comment itself, if I may, it just reads, per comments from the town board, a sidewalk should be provided along Ward Hill Road along the subdivision frontage.
Okay, right. And that, and Ron, that is what we discussed. So yes, that is, that is acceptable.
That's acceptable? Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the attendance of Supervisor Schultz. Welcome.
I just have the, you guys, it's also sent out.
Jim, I'm sorry, what is being handed out?
Thank you. It's the.
It's what I just gave to you.
Town Board Seeker input for proposed forest view subdivision.
So I also sent it out electronically.
Sorry, Steve, Mr. Supervisor, we really can't hear you. Can you talk into a mic possibly?
Sorry, so I just handed out the, the Town Board Seeker input. I kept getting interrupted, so I couldn't quite get it done before the meeting. But I sent it out electronically, asking the town clerks to forward it because I don't have all of your emails. But for the folks who were in here, I handed them, since I knew they didn't have computers, I handed them a printout version. But like I said, you will get, you will get an electronic version as well. It's just, it's just the input, since I understand that I wanted you to get it now so you have time to digest it before your secret determination. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. McIntyre, I think the floor was yours, correct? You're all set? Thank you. The chairman will recognize Mr. Page.
Thank you. Peter and Ryan, I'm disappointed that you haven't seen these comments yet because most of our time and study was geared towards the comments sent by Chris to the planning board on June 10. So now that I know that you haven't seen them, I'm going to assume, as a former board member and knowing the financial ramifications of building on lots, I'm assuming you're going to go with the 278 model. So my comments will be directed with the understanding that's probably the way you're going to go.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. So I'll just pick out a couple of the most important ones. First of all, as far as the sidewalk was concerned, I would never approve this project without that sidewalk that the town board recommended. I think it's pertinent, especially with schoolchildren being picked up. I'm not sure the buses will go down into a 278. I'm not sure whether there'll be sidewalks in that 278 development. Usually, we have them on collector roads, but I don't think this model is a collector road. So I'm not sure how that works. But that sidewalk in front may be very important as far as child safety.
Rick, yeah, Rick, I can answer that. I mean, yes, there will be a sidewalk along the subdivision street, and the subdivision street will be a dedicated town road. So school buses will, should, I don't want to speak for the school district, but it will be a public street. So they can use the street, but there also will be a sidewalk along it also, the subdivision street.
Thank you. I'm not an engineer, but I, there is a comment about the ownership of land for the fire access road. Can you tell me where the location of that is? Is it, is it to the west of the main entrance?
Correct. It's to the west of the main entrance, and it's in the rear yards to the west of lots one through 10.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. There's a comment there that you haven't seen about the ownership of the land for the fire access road should be discussed with the town staff. The town may prefer having access easement instead of owning the land, just to let you know.
Okay.
My recommendation would be the easement, but that's not part of what we're going to do here tonight. There was also a comment about, there's a possibility, I was going to ask Chris, but you haven't seen the comment yet, due to the increase in sewage directed towards the Country Hills Estate pump station, upgrades to the station may be required. This is in the process of being reviewed with the town staff. I don't know if that's been done yet or not, but I'm assuming that any improvements that need to be done at that pump station would be borne by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, currently, right now, we are replacing the pumps. So regardless of this project, that the pumps are being replaced. And from our look at the storage in the pump station itself, because the water consumption is a lot less than what we initially thought it was going to be, then it looks like the storage is okay as well. Those are the two big things that we look at. So that, that should not be an issue.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And then as far as the preliminary approval for subdivision, the rest of it is pretty much engineering, and so I'm, I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Page. The chairman will recognize Mr. Ecker.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of comments based off of the conversation so far this evening. I wanted to go back real quick and enter in a comment to the speeding on Ward Hill Road. Let me also start that by asking a question. Chris, I know we asked for accident information from the county. Did, were, they were able to send anything?
We did. Right after the Town Board Workshop Meeting, or the Town Board Meeting, rather, we asked the Monroe County DOT to supply us with that information, and we have not received it. But the request has been made.
Okay, I'd be interested to see what some of that was. I know we also internally requested our person or the town-owned speed limit signs be installed on Ward Hill to try to ascertain some of the speeding habits that are out there. I know due to COVID, we also had skewed results. But we are looking forward to grabbing that information and sharing it with the sheriff's office. The captain is also eagerly awaiting any other additional information to help with some reinforcement. The topsoil pile, I see number three in the comment, Chris, I think you've already addressed it. I'd like the topsoil pile pulled away from the backyards on Ward Hill, possibly even off the extension road that's going to be back to the cabin so that sifting or any other dirt or dust that, from that operation, doesn't affect the nearby residents.
Okay.
I'd make also a point coming up on the sidewalks, Mr. Page, the, actually, the applicant from the beginning also, when installing sidewalks, asked our interpretation how we would like them installed. We met with the drainage foreman, Mike Catalano, and determined whether or not a setback to the sidewalk was a better fit for this location, different from what Trail View has now, which is a sidewalk directly on the backside of the gutter. Trail View South, we initiated a sidewalk on the backside of the gutter, easier for the plow truck to clear on a regular basis because there aren't any other sidewalks down there in that corner. The drainage foreman, sidewalk foreman, said that the five-foot grass space and then the sidewalk would be better suited for this subdivision, similar to that of Branch Brook on the north side. Since there's a sidewalk plow right there, they would cross Ward Hill and clean those sidewalks with the same as Branch Brook. So we looked at sidewalks interior on both different types for this subdivision. Grading, I know has been brought up a lot specifically from the neighbors of Ward Hill as well as Branch Brook. I am looking forward to not only fixing those issues with the applicant, I want the comment again that I made in the previous planning board meeting to go again on record that we will have a very high presence on this construction site throughout the process to make sure that the town is not only completely informed of everything that's going on, but that everything that is being constructed meets and or exceeds Town of Hendrix specifications. So that comment I brought up before, and I wanted to make sure that the residents were aware that Harvest Hills unfortunately was not in my purview prior. We will still work on fixing those issues. Trail View was, and we have gone through and fixed those issues as they have come up. And we will continue to do so in the new subdivision up here if it does also get approved. So those are my other comments based off of public information and the other items that I've heard in this meeting. So I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ecker. Now the chairman will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As this is going on, I was trying to go through the supervisor's notes and kind of like fast-track read them here, especially regarding the seeker. So I didn't get to all that. And I don't know if others are doing the same thing. So as I talk, maybe some people can chip in on what the supervisor provided us. As far as the drainage goes, I'm okay with that. You know, BME has been in here a lot, and they're a reputable company. They're thorough. And I asked them very clearly at the last meeting, will this be a net profit to the people in our town? And they assured me that it would be a net profit. So because they're reputable and thorough, I believe them. And I think that honestly, the drainage is so currently bad that almost anything would be an improvement. So I appreciate that from you guys. And I appreciate Amy Dake being here. You know, a lot of the questions that we had regarding this were traffic. Now, what I don't like is that, because of the COVID, and you brought this up, the best data we have for the particular stuff that I'm worried about is 99, or 1995. We're talking 15 years ago. And that, that kind of scares me as far as what's going on because we touched on it, we touched on sightlines, and one of my big things was sightlines because I personally have been over to this development, Branch Brook, and I've taken left and right turns off of Branch Brook, and at times, it was scary. Some of that goes to Mr. Neal's point where they're speeding, and I understand that. And I know that when you run those things, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, BME, but the study that you used was studying, I know the speed limit's 40, but they said 45 miles an hour. And when was that particular study done for the sightlines?
We went, we conducted a site distance review earlier this year in February.
Okay. Yeah, I thought before you said it was a couple of years old, and site distance is what I meant, not sightlines. Thank you. Me personally, I get it. I'm not doing this scientifically. I, maybe I just got unlucky at the time of day I was doing it. But knowing that just with that one road coming out to Ward Hill, I can't imagine putting one directly opposed to it and trying to figure out who's turning right, who's turning left. So, you know, I can't go against the data. I am a scientific kind of guy. I'm just saying personally, something doesn't feel right about it to me. Also, you know, there's talk about the neighbors, we're saying that once traffic starts going through, they're going to take the path of least resistance and go through the neighborhoods and then come back out on East Henry Avenue Road rather than doing Ward Hill. So to me, those are, those are big concerns. I also want to say that, you know, without knowing the results of the meeting that's supposed to happen with the town board on July 6, I think that sometimes, like, we're getting the cart before the horse with us talking about any approval on this. I may be wrong with that. And, and you know, there's other things, and maybe our, our board attorney can explain this a little bit better. But part of the whole 278 is the idea of a proper incentive to be able to do these things. And I know that the supervisors talked to you, I know that the board chairman has talked to you. But I question whether the incentives are great enough to allow the 278. So I don't know where, what falls under our purview, what power do we have? Or is that purely a town board issue on whether the incentive is great enough to issue the 278? Because in my opinion, from, from what we've been through with this, I don't think the incentive is great enough for the 278. But that's just my opinion. And that brings up the whole viability of this project. Is that under our purview, Dan, or is that purely a town board decision to make?
Whether or not to accept the proposal for the open land is up to the town board. Whether or not. proposal for the open land is up to the Town Board. Whether or not the benefit under 278 is substantial enough to allow the aberration, so to speak, from traditional zoning is really up to the Planning Board. You know, I, this is kind of a hybrid thing. I kind of have an issue with the whole 278 thing being invoked, but I will, once everybody has spoken, I'll tell you, I'm going to be recommending that you defer approval. And I'll tell you why. And I'm going to ask the applicant to address a few issues as well. I just don't want to interrupt.
No, and Dan, I was done. I mean, you're answering my questions, and I think that it's maybe a good segue to what you're about to say because I'm of the feeling that, you know, I'm not willing to say no about this right now, but I am certainly, I've still got questions. I want to know the viability of the 278. So that being said, those are my questions, and I'll defer to you, Dan. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mestrela, shall we wait till the others speak, and then I'll recognize you? Is that okay?
That would be great, yes.
Thank you. Board, the Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Thank you. Many of my questions have been answered. It is unfortunate. We do have answers here from BME. However, they're addressing comments dated March 5th as opposed to what we're looking at today dated June 10th. So if I can't address a few of those, again, some of them have previously been addressed. Regarding under general number four, how will the new trails be connected to the Lehigh Valley Trail? I didn't see that on the drawings that we were given today.
So a minute. This is Chris Martin, and my apologies for you not getting the comments. I'll find out what happened, but in the meantime, I did send both you and Ryan an email with the attachment with it.
Yep, just appreciate that.
Got it?
Yep.
If you have it, take a look at it and see if you have any concerns with any of those comments.
Okay. I guess while we're waiting, the one thing I'd like to address is the trails. We'd like to offer, we haven't shown them on the plan at this point. Part of this project is providing approximately 28, 29 acres of parkland below the project site to the south that will allow future access to the Lehigh Valley Trail System to the south. We'd like to offer, and the applicant would like to offer, that the trails be identified in the field via a site walk in anticipation of a future approval for this project. Then we would meet in the field and identify the best route for accessing the Lehigh Valley Trail System through our project site.
I would like to see how we are going to address the trail connection prior to approval.
Patty, I don't have a problem with being able to do that, you know, given the fact that the application's going to get tabled tonight. So we're scheduled so that if, I don't mean to jump ahead, but if that means we'll be coming back to see you, I think on July 7th, so two or three weeks from now. Chris, I think we can get out there and get something figured out of how we would do that so we can address that comment within your June 10th comments. I don't see a problem with that.
Chris Martin again. So yes, Peter, if you and Ryan, you want to go out with one of, you know, the town staff, myself, and maybe Craig, we'd be more than happy to go and do that with you.
And I can tell you, just from skimming through the June 10th comments, I'm not seeing anything in here that we could not address, but I would let Mr. Mestrela, after he provides his input, the one comment I do think we should address or discuss this evening is comment B8, which is about the clustering, the use of 278, and the responsibilities of the Town Board and the Planning Board as it relates to that. I do have some input on that or an opinion on that. But so, but the other comments we're fine with. I'm not seeing anything there that we can't do.
Peter, would you like to address that now, or would you like to wait?
I guess I'd like to hear Mr. Mestrela, because what he may say, I may agree with.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. Yeah.
Dan, would you like to address that now?
No, I'd like to wait till everybody else, and then certainly everybody's welcome to join in after.
Very good. If I may continue then, regarding number seven, per comments from Town Board, the sidewalk provided along Ward Hill along the subdivision frontage. When the question was first asked tonight, it was asked about Ward Hill frontage, and the answer was yes, this is acceptable. But when we talked a little further into it, it was discussed that sidewalks would be within the development. And I just want to clarify, will there be sidewalks within the development as long as, as addressed in number seven, along the frontage of the subdivision on Ward Hill Road?
Yes, there will be both.
Thank you. You address that, address this, this. And those are the questions in addition to what previously have been addressed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Chair will recognize Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I sent you an email, which you responded to me the other day, but just for all the Board members, we had an email from a resident who indicated that he didn't think that the project qualified for a cluster. And I was wondering if you could just address that.
Well, I think that's going to be addressed, this is Chris Martin again. I think that's going to be addressed by probably Peter and Dan when we get further into this. So I think I'm going to defer to them.
Okay, well, that's fine. That's fine. Okay, so we're going to put off that question for right now. Okay. The next thing I ask is, there was a response to one of our comments here dated the 28th. It actually came from you, Peter. And the question was, had to deal with the number of trees which were on the, first of all, on the property. And it was recommended that the other half of the trees, which I'm going to say is roughly 60, would be used for some landscaping. And you basically responded yes, but you responded not trees, but bushes or shrubs. To me, landscaping with brushes or bushes or shrubs is not adequate. Can we go back to what they had requested would be trees?
Yes, we can. What we were proposing is, was a mix of shrubs and trees, and and Chris can verify this, I believe. Rule of thumb in Henrietta is you can, in lieu of planting a tree, you can provide two shrubs. The point, and then our landscape architects prefer to do plantings of a mixture of shrubs and trees because you get a more effective buffer and landscape plan that way because the shrubs fill the understory of the trees and things like that. But if the town desires it strictly to be all trees, it can be all trees. We'll defer to the Planning Board's request on that.
Okay. Well, it was Chris's recommendation that the balance of the trees be used in the open spaces as a buffer. And to me, brushes, bushes or shrubs aren't as much, but I guess the Board can decide on that, what they want to do. The only other thing that I had, or actually, I had two things, and maybe you've answered this, Peter, I'm not sure, but normally, and what we've done in the past, if a applicant did not receive the comments and didn't get a chance to answer the question, can you respond to those? We typically would table that application, giving the applicant time to review those comments. And I know that you've received them now. You've had a chance to talk, look at them and make some general comments, but should we be tabling this, which we may be doing anyway, but should we be tabling it because you didn't get a chance to look at the comments?
To that question, my answer is no. Just again, as I said, I've read through them right here, right now. I'm not seeing any comment here besides the clustering one, which we want to discuss, that affects a planning decision. These comments primarily are technical in nature. I think other Board members have identified specific ones of concern of interest, I should say, to the Board members, and we've responded to them, I believe, in a positive manner. So to answer your question directly, Mr. Neal, my answer is no to that question.
Thank you. My last question has to do with the paperwork that the supervisor handed out. Is that anything we need to be making a decision tonight?
I've not had a chance to look at it yet, Mr. Neal, myself. Certainly, as we move along, we'll have a couple of options tonight. We can entertain a motion to approve. We can entertain a motion to table. There are certain things. I know there's a lot of neighborhood interest in this application. I know that a lot of the neighbors feel like their voices may not have been heard at this point. So we will discuss that in a few moments after, after you're finished and after Mr. Mestrela has a chance to speak.
Well, I'm all set. So you can
Thank you.
Proceed with Dan.
Mestrela.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for two seconds?
Yes, Mr. Ecker.
Yep. I'm sorry. So before Mr. Mestrela goes into a lot, I have a question based off what I believe now is a little bit of confusion from Mr. Borkowski's comment. I'm looking at the traffic study, and forgive me, I don't want to take, Matt, and I'm not going to take your words out of context, but the, if I heard correctly, the traffic counts, do you believe they're from 1995?
Well, I see that they're 95 to 18, but when Amy was asked if they were from 95, she said yes, and then they basically, it looks like they extrapolated numbers after that. So
I'm under the information that the traffic counts are from 15, 16, and 17, but the turning movements, which were from the Harvest Hills traffic study is from 95. So which directions that they go, but the traffic itself, the AADT is from 15, 16, 17, and I'm, I'm understanding from reading the report that that's extrapolated to a 2020 traffic.
Right. Thanks for the clarification. Yeah.
Can we get clarification that that's true?
I'm here. You're correct, Craig. Actually, you're both correct. So the turning movement counts are from the 1995 study. The ADT counts are more recent, from 2017 and 2018. And those 2017 and 2018 counts and the historical ADT information is what was used to extrapolate the turning movement counts out to 2020.
Great. And did you add a background from 15, 16, or 17 to added existing traffic data to become an existing for 2020?
So what we did, we actually didn't add growth to it. And the reason is, if you look at the historical data from 1995 to 2017 on Ward Hill Road, it's almost identical. That count stayed flat. No traffic, there was very little, if any, traffic growth at all. And the same thing with the traffic on Pinnacle Road and on East Henrietta Road. On East Henrietta Road, traffic volumes in 2018 are actually slightly lower than what they were in 1995. And that's kind of what we've seen across the board throughout Monroe County and other areas that we've done work in. Traffic volumes increased through like 2007, and then when we had the economic crash in 2008, we saw traffic volumes drop off significantly, and they haven't really come back to that level.
Nope, you're correct, Dan. I appreciate you going through that because yes, I'm familiar with older studies that would add background and to get up to, but you're right, with flat data, you wouldn't have anything to extrapolate from or to add to. So, but Matt, are we clear then that the traffic data?
Yeah, and actually, I was clear, but thanks for clarifying it because my concern has always been the turns. So, you know, I know we're talking about negligible increase in traffic, and I understand that's the newer data. But the turns, I've been there, I've watched them, and now we're adding another side to turn. So I think the turns are bad now, and then we're going to add a road across from it, and then the turn data was from 95. So yeah.
Well, that helps clarify my, your thoughts too then, for that for me. Okay. Mike, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize for interrupting, but I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Ecker. Mr. Mestrela?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's some questions about the 278 and the code. So I'll sort of start out with my take on it. The code itself does reference that project review under this open space incentive option shall follow the process under section 295 dash 60, Cluster Subdivision per New York State Town Law, section 278. That was a provision that was added some years ago after the original design of this statute by Bay and Associates, who did the rural residential study on behalf of the town and took a lot of time and effort doing it. In my opinion, if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of the of the town section, then they have satisfied 278. I don't really think that 278 is the appropriate measure because it talks about a variance from what the zoning code calls for. And actually, if they meet the 295 dash 521, open space incentive options of our code, there really is no variance then. So that being said, you know, the question is from, one question is, from a legal point of view, have they met the 295 dash 521 requirements? And so BME can address the issue. There's a, there's a letter from Benjamin Skomsky dated June 14, 2020, and he previously broached this at the public hearing before the Board. Is the applicant being given, you know, multiple credits for the same thing in obtaining their 25% options? I reviewed this. I, you know, well, I think in October of 2019, wherein Mr. Vars set out in a letter to the Board why he believed the the three incentives were appropriate. And in the discretion of the Planning Board to determine whether he has met those, and I would encourage you to review those sections and see if he has. And the sections themselves certainly have some overlap in them, but they are distinguishable from one another. And in my opinion, the applicant has met those distinctions. However, some of them are discretionary with the Planning Board. Even if they've met the distinctions, do you want to grant that incentive? So that's something that the Planning Board has to consider, and I can elaborate further if need be. But, you know, certainly, BME can address the issue of whether they're entitled to all three of those. Mr. Skomsky, who, by the way, is an attorney, and, you know, my job is at least in part, to make sure that I'm at least in part, to make sure that I am protecting the town and the planning board from litigation, if possible, and if it's not possible to protect from litigation, to sort of make sure that we're on the right side of it at the end of things. And he has also addressed that he believes that there are exceptions in, in the 278 application, that, that some land that is being considered shouldn't be considered. So I will ask BME to address that as well, just so that we have a record and we know what we're deciding on. My other issue with action tonight is that the planning board declared its intent to be lead agency on this on March, or on May 28. Generally speaking, interested agencies are accorded 30 days to to respond, if they want to respond, if they want to object, and then there's a process for determining who should be lead agency. I understand from a rather lengthy conversation I had with the town attorney this afternoon that the town board has in fact already stated that they consent to the planning board being lead agency. Conversation I had with Mr. Martin earlier today indicated that the only other interested agency would be the Monroe County Department of Transportation, and that they have submitted comments. I don't know that they have actually responded to the request regarding the planning board being lead agency. And, and that leaves me a little concerned, because they're supposed to have 30 days to do it. So especially in light of the fact that the town board has seen fit to call for a public hearing, and I don't think they're required to. I think they're, they're doing this out of concern for, you know, the neighbors and the neighborhood in the application, but they are going to hold a public hearing on January 6th, after their workshop. It's a Monday.
January?
Or, I'm sorry, July 6th. I apologize. Thank you, Patty. That's a little out of their accord, but that has to do with the, the pause order and the COVID restrictions, which give the board the authority up to and through July 7th to, to hold a virtual public hearing, but don't address what happens after July 7th. And their next regularly scheduled town board meeting isn't until July 8th. So it's my understanding that the town board, to give some clarity to this, is offering, or not offering, is scheduling to hold a, a hearing on July the 6th, so that there's some clarity and certainty, and that the, anybody who has comments has the ability to make them without having to reschedule everything. The planning board's next meeting is July 7th. The town board's next meeting after that is July 8th. I don't know if the town attorney had the opportunity to discuss with the supervisor or members of the town board the agenda, but we discussed, and he suggested that the town board could hold the public hearing on July the 6th, withhold action until July the 8th. That would allow the planning board to formally assume lead agency and in fact make a seeker determination on July 7th. And would actually afford the planning board the opportunity, if it so chose, to entertain any comments made at the town board public hearing, and any suggestions that the town board may have for July 7th seeker determination. It would fulfill the 30-day requirement for notification to interested agencies, and it would not delay the, if approvals were going to be made, it would not delay applicant at all in obtaining its approvals, while at the same time allowing further public input that could relate to a seeker determination. So, you know, BME is more than welcome to address the questions I asked a few moments ago this evening. They're more than welcome, in my opinion, to address them in, in writing, if, if they so choose, prior to our July 7th meeting, but my recommendation would be to table this both for a seeker determination and and approval or disapproval of the subdivision, the preliminary subdivision application until the July 7th meeting. At, at what I, you know, suggest is no real-time expense to the applicant. This has been a long application. They, you know, they're certainly ultimately entitled to a, a decision, one way or another. But I think this, since there's going to be a July 6th public hearing, and, you know, July 8th action by the town board, if one is appropriate, is no real delay.
Thank you, Mr. Mestrela. Yeah, my comment was going to be that due to the high level of public interest, in my opinion, it would be worthwhile.
Hold on a second.
To postpone this and, and allow the public to express their opinions on this, but I leave that up to the board, and BME, is there anything else you'd like to say at this point?
Yes, just a few things in response to Mr. Mestrela. I would say, in, in general, concur with everything Dan laid out as it relates to the process. A couple of things I would like to say, though, is, first of all, let, let me take a step back. We'll, we'll touch on some issues here right now, but we will submit written information to, I'm going to say reinforce and support our position, so that the board has it in writing and has the ability to digest it between now and our next appearance on July 7th. But first and foremost is the use of Town Law 278, the clustering provisions, the application submitted as it relates to this through the Open Space Incentive Law, and also the town's Rural Residential Design Guidelines. All three of those are critical factors in this application. And what I would recommend the board to do, and we will reinforce this, is all of that was addressed within the original application letter dated February 5th, 2020, where we identify the three areas under the Open Space Incentive Law, as to why we felt, as Mr. Mestrela said, why we felt we, that those could be applied to this project. So I would ask you to review that. That letter also goes through the, the various tenants of the Rural Residential Design Guidelines, as to how this project addresses those. That information's there. But the thing I want to touch base on is the overall umbrella of using Town Law 278, the clustering provisions. Yes, that is a, that is a discretionary decision of the planning board to apply 278, but actually, Town Law 278 allows either the applicant to request the approval under 278, or the, the planning board themselves can actually require an applicant to utilize Town Law 278. But I think the important thing to remember here, and this is what we will provide additional written documentation on, the, the clustering of this subdivision, in lieu of developing this property as two-acre lots, which would be allowed, which is the requirements under the RR Zone. We're proposing a cluster development, so that the proposed development would be clustered into 15 acres of a 100-and-acre, 108-acre site, which yields significant benefits to the town of Henrietta. The governing provision of Town Law 278 is that, that the applicant is afforded certain waivers to the bulk area requirements of the district in return for identified benefits to the town. That is separate than the Open Space Incentive, and a couple of the key ones are, is, is the fact that this plan, by clustering, meets a stated goal of the town of Henrietta as it relates, relates to agricultural farmland protection, and that being the placement of the conservation easement on the Larkin Farm. That does not happen without a cluster subdivision development. This project also yields 30-plus acres of land that the town board has expressed interest in as town parkland. That does not happen without a cluster subdivision. And then there's other things as, as it relates to maintenance of infrastructure. We will go through all of this, but the point is, clustering this development is the right way to go, because of it does condense the development into a compact, developable area of the site, and provides vast tracts of open space, a stated goal of the town. And like I said, I'm not going to re-go through the Open Space Incentive. Those are in those letters. We'll reinforce that. With regards to seeker, it is an unlisted action. I guess I just need one clarification. I think, Mr. Mestrela, you had said that the, the planning board's declaration of intent to be lead agency was issued on May 28th?
I believe so, at our last meeting, yes.
Okay, so I guess my question is, that did not occur at the March 10th meeting when we held the public hearing?
I, I believe it did not. It, it occurred on the, our last meeting, which was two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Okay.
You're muted, Chris. Chris, you're muted.
Chris, muted.
All right, how's that?
There you go.
So, so typically, for an unlisted action, you have two options. You can do a coordinated review and not a coordinated review. So if it's a type-one action, you have to do a coordinated review. Typically, for these types of subdivisions, we don't do a coordinated review. For the past couple of ones that we've done, it's very rare that, unless it's a type-one action, to, to do a coordinated review. So after talking with the supervisor, we thought that, you know what, maybe we should take a step back, and, you know, even though it's not a type-one action, it's an unlisted action, we should still do a coordinated review on it. So that's why the planning board, at their May 28th meeting, declared their intent to be the lead agency. And we could still do that with the way the meetings were set up. Now, there's only two involved agencies. There's the town board and the Monroe County Department of Transportation.
And so that declaration was sent to the county DOT?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we just haven't heard back from them yet, that's all.
The, the planning board doesn't meet between now and July 7th again, correct?
It does not, no. We're in our summer schedule, so July 7th is our next meeting.
Yeah, so there's nothing to gain of us reaching out to the county to get a letter, because the 30 days will have expired anyways.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, and certainly, you, you wouldn't want a, a very hyper-technical defect like that to
Sure.
hamper anything.
No, yeah, I appreciate that, exactly.
Okay.
So I guess, yes, Mr. Chairman, what I would say, you know, we acknowledge that the board is, is, is going to table this action this evening, and, and we will actually use that opportunity to do a few things. As we said, we will meet with staff to discuss, so that we can get the Lehigh Valley Trail General Connection Plan mapped out, so that can be provided to the board. We will provide written responses and, if necessary, revised plans to the June 10th memo from Mr. Martin that he's now provided to us. We will also, will provide some, I'm going to say some supplemental information as it relates to comments that the board has received from others as to the justification the applicant believes as to why we meet the, the criteria of the Open Space Incentives for the board's consideration. We acknowledge that is a board consideration to do that. And obviously, we will go through all of this with, at the July 6th town board public hearing. I, I guess the last thing I, I would like to say, because it was a question, I can't remember what board member asked it. To me, the code is pretty clear, is that the planning board is charged with granting the subdivision approval, including the use of Town Law 278, and also applying the Open Space Incentive. The only thing the town board, the, the only action the town board is required to take is whether they would agree to accept the one 30-acre parcel as open space to the town of Henrietta. That's the action that's required of the town board. Everything else, as it relates to the land use plan and, and everything, I believe rests with the planning board, as Mr. Mestrela said. 295-52.1, the Open Space Incentive, says it shall be applied following the clustering law of 295-60. 295-60 is the section of the code that, what are the, what empowers the planning board and sets the powers and duties of the planning board. So to me, it's very clear that all of that rests with this board.
By and large, I would agree. I, I would just say that beyond the, the 30 acres, you said it's really up to the town board to approve the open space. So the entirety not, including that which is being dedicated to the farming use, the agriculture use.
That is correct, because they do have, yeah, they have to establish the conservation easement. That is correct.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any other comments? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, who was that? I'm sorry, Mr. Berkowski?
Matt Berkowski. I, I will make a motion to table this. One, to consider whether the incentives are acceptable, and I appreciate that Peter, I, I love everything you said, and I even though I, it sounds like you've already kind of written some of this, if you could make it kind of stupid proof for a person like me, that would be great. So to consider whether the incentives are acceptable, Mr. Mestrela mentioned the seeker determination, and honestly, just to hear what new things might happen during the town board hearing. So a motion to table PB 324.
Okay, I guess first, though, it looks like we need to also, we need to make a motion on the seeker, so that's my fault, so let, let's do that first. Mr. Berkowski, do you wish to make a, a motion on the seeker?
You don't need to.
We don't need to?
And, no, and, and quite honestly, I think you should wait until the meeting on the 7th. Then you've, you've gone past the 30-day threshold, and nobody can
Very good. All right. So, Mr. Berkowski, we have a motion to, to table application PB 324. Do I have a second? Mr. McIntyre, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, the, the motion is tabled, I'm sorry, the application is tabled. I think, Amy, thank you. Peter, Ryan, thank you very much. We'll see you folks in a few weeks, and everybody else, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Patty, Mrs. Brill, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody. Good evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.